My money.
I'll start praying.
Okay.
Okay.
It is Tuesday, May 17, 2016. Let's call the meeting to order. Minutes for reports received and filed.
The collective agreement is in the details.
Commissioner committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Board of Railers meeting tomorrow. Political and Economic Responsibility Committee meeting today. Chamber Barbecue Thursday. Four-H gun shoot Saturday. So all you little shooters out there think you can outshoot me, bring it on, sucker. Could probably use some EMS out there, too.
So we can shoot you, or?
No, we're gonna take you. Just better be better shot, 'cause I shoot back. We got a couple ex-wives, ain't scared of a lot, man. That's all I got. We're starting early today.
I got an ED meeting at the Chamber tomorrow. That's all I have, besides what Jeff mentioned.
I got Cap region board meeting tonight. Home savings bank board meeting tomorrow. Chamber Barbecue, it's also my wedding anniversary Thursday.
Hmm, that's a little while.
Friday.
Sympathy card?
Yeah, I'll be in charge. Saturday is-
Skip right over that.
Dr. Todd Clay Combs retirement dinner at the Zerestate Technical College. Friday, I won't be here but buy peanuts from the Lions Club, please.
I'm gonna buy them for you.
I won't be here, I'll be drunk.
Well, what are you picking off for?
Oh, yeah. Anyway.
I get it.
Yeah. Appointments by commission, Mid-Missouri Solid Waste Management District Council appointment. Do you have that in this?
Yeah, there's new signatures. I'll be on that board. Might let Mark Libber talk, he got nominated again. I wasn't gonna ask him. I mean, I was going to ask him. He went to the council meeting the other night, too. Yeah.
We gotta appoint both of you?
Yeah, he's the backup. I make him go to the council meeting Tuesday, that's once a year.
Are you both members, or is he your-
He's just my backup, or the board. Now, we can both go to the council meeting, 'cause we have two votes on that, but usually one of us gets-
So we're just naming you to the board, then?
Both of us. Both did the council, I think, is how that works.
I move that we want Jeff Belsher and Mark Libbering to the Mid-Missouri Solid Waste Desert Council.
I have a second. On paper?
Aye.
Okay.
Unless you're wanting to do it. Solid waste isn't-
Now, we have all these, these great people. We have all these great people here. Here is National Emergency Medical Services Week. What's up? Who wants to come up and receive a resolution proclamation from the Cole County Commission? Do you want me to read all this? We got time, or?
Yeah, if you'd like to read it, with.
Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, including Cole County EMS, are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, law enforcement officers, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. I'm gonna skip whereas. Therefore, the Cole County Commission, in recognition of this event, does hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through 21st, 2016, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
They said that much on there.
Yeah, I skipped, I skipped a couple.
You got your readers on.
Thank all you guys.
Thank all you all.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Pictures, y'all wanna?
Sure. Look, you guys come up here and we'll say, maybe back in.
Since I'm the tallest. Tallest thing to be taller.
I mean, you guys can come back here.
Okay, ready? One, two, three.
You might wanna do another one.
What? What'd he do?
Yeah, rabbit work, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, did it? Alright, there we go.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Thank you.
You're alright, you're good.
Hey, why don't you put this to me? Where all, where everybody is. Okay.
You know, my adopted son Jeff, Sunday morning, all of the Belshers were in prison brew after mass, eating breakfast. My adopted son Jeff, when I was there, I asked his dad, I said, "Where's Jeff?" They said-
I was in church.
Yeah, that's right.
I was, I was praying for you. Had to sit on the side, 'cause there was a 50th wedding anniversary. I thought I could afford folks, gonna be able to get divorced. No, it was a 50th anniversary, and we prayed for it, 50 more for us, so, it was pretty cool. There's relations-
I got thirty-two this Thursday.
In the blood.
So pray for, pray for-
Oh, well, pray for you. I pray for living not to kill you. Poor girl.
I know, yeah, she's gonna go ahead and have him for sure. Okay. Let's keep going. This is contracts. Approval and signing. Approval and signing the final hazardous mitigation plan.
Susan's a lead meeting-
Actually, it's not really signed today, but that's our second kind of public meeting. Susan's here with Missouri Regional Planning Commission. We have completed several months of this plan. I think she's gonna give you the highlights, or she got passed out. So with all the other communities within the county, Dave's here with Wartsville, Wartsville Towns, St. Martin, St. Thomas, we had a very good turnout from all of our communities. So this kinda gets some highlights. Susan, you wanna add anything, or kinda go through?
Uh, just, this is the mitigation actions that the county has, is committing to in the plan to try and undertake in the next five years. And I've kind of split them out by department, and put after it if another department is involved with it. The ones involved are the new ones that we talked about, the first interpretation. On the backside, County Commission, keeping the building hold up to date when public works recommended, updating the flood management ordinance, flood planning ordinance when needed, and, you know, the kind of bike we get down here and kind of talk to them, yeah. That's also working with public works. Encourage appropriate land use development downstream from dams. That's not a huge issue probably in Cole County, but it is if we get much development out of the county. It's something to be aware of if someone's coming for development, and I get public works to advise on that. And then, last two is trying to encourage tornado safe zones in the county, and the commission can be moved to promote that. Huge need in this part of the world, and there's not enough of them. And then, as we talked about last time, something that the whole county were really encouraging to work on, and this would be the County Commission, all the elected officials for their departments, and then Bill would, you know, help out, 'cause he has a lot of knowledge around this, and develop a continuity of operations plan. So since every department is their own boss, it kinda needs to happen at the department level, but the whole county can work on that. That's a huge gap in local government planning, just to have, how do you keep your own business going when disaster? We kinda talked about that last time. So basically, we're at the point of the draft of the plan that's been submitted to FEMA last, last week, and they'll be looking it over and telling us anything we see that they think are missing, that we need to clean up a little bit before it goes to FEMA. They'd like the plan adopted before they send it to FEMA, and then FEMA will get the final approval. So we're now at the stage where we're asking people to look things over, put it in the county comments, class comments, and then asking the governing bodies to adopt the plan. If you don't accomplish what is stated in the mitigation strategy and these actions for the next five years, there's no penalty. This is just kind of laying out what we think needs to happen in our county, you know, to mitigate the hazards that we identified in the plan.
I might say all our county departments, public works, everyone's involved in that. Same with the city, their planning, their public works, their city folks, as well as I mentioned, all of our other communities. So very good turnout, our water districts were there. So I think we had overall a very good combination of school systems were there, Lincoln, just a public school, Eugene, Russellville, so all of us was involved in this. So a big hats off to all the people that helped with that. So now we've got that done, and I'm gonna leave a copy of this resolution, and that's something that the commission would need to do, and if you wanna look at it, or it's just a kind of a blank copy, Sam, that we can put at some other date, not today, but that's all we'll need to do. Once the commission does the resolution, we'll take that to the other communities, and they can do their own resolution for each community.
And I can email a new document of that resolution, and I really have somebody to-
Yeah. Just give it to me and all.
Correct.
And that way, we can do the resolution at a later date, and very simple, it's something we did five years ago, but what the commission kinda does, their flashings over, then Little Jeff City, and Lake Horn, and Wolfville House, do the same, all them. Thanks, Susan, she's put a lot of work into this, you know, with five days left, so. She's retiring, so she got to do Cole County at the very last.
My swan song.
Would you like to work part-time?
No, I'd like to clean my house, actually.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much.
She done a great job. And as just a side note, we talked before, when Ed was here with us, Ed would look at some grant funds that we can put together at county, continue the operations plan, and they could throw it forth to us, too. And maybe give the city included as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, approval and sign to show me healthy women contract renewal from PHSS.
Good morning. So this is just our annual contract renewal for the Show Me Healthy Women program, and that's the program for those ladies that are ages 35 to 64 that don't have insurance coverage, they can go and get covered cancer screenings, and we pay for those, and then we reimburse by DHL.
I thought we all had insurance for a month.
They might have insurance, but they might not cover this, or the doctor level's too high.
I'm a lot.
Behave, I'm gonna give my-
I'm alive. Well, I'm a tribe, I'm a lot. Come up with a new song.
How about Happy Days You're Here? Some presidential campaign song. Okay.
Can't believe you need a signature or approval, or?
I do need you to approve it, mine.
You emailed that the other day, you know, got it, didn't you?
Should have repeated, you were four of us.
I move that we approve and sign the Show Me Healthy Women's contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bid award contract for 2016-18 refurbishing building rear of Cole County Public Works.
You guys have paper copies, because I know this, I go up at 4:00 a.m. Anyway, we got two bids, GBH submitted on, GBH was submitting in the lower. Total base cost is $84,953. Public Works recommendation is to add the one row of windows and the garage doors for additional light, so the contract amount will be $90,485, two cents. I think they came and showed you the products they were using, and you guys were good with that, so if you have any questions about that, otherwise, the recommendation is for GBH builders.
Do you have the bid tags on it, or?
Yeah, you have the paper copy.
What was the budget amount for? Was our budget number?
Hundred thousand.
Five thousand. On them garage doors? I guess once we awarded to whoever, they can use whoever they want to on the garage doors, or did we specify that whatever they submitted in the bid is what they have to use? Or can they shop around their bids?
What do you mean, it's actually a third?
Okay, if we go to GBH, and they said, "We want to use ABC Door Company," and this is who we're gonna use, do they have to, or can they go, "Okay, we're gonna shop around this bid and get you-"
I think they're gonna want to write the word, I think, so they're gonna read that.
Okay, I don't even care, I'm not gonna mention any names. But ABC Door Company is who bid it for them, do they specify who it's coming from, what kind of door it is, and then they can turn around and shop it if they want to? We don't have a whole lot of control over it. I know we ran into that over at the law enforcement center.
Did they list their bidders on it?
Subcontractors.
I don't think they listed out their subcontractors, did they?
No, they both went through the same, there's nothing that they're saying they have to use the same one. They both went through a-
I don't even care if they use the same one, but if they submit a bid, and they said these doors were $43,000, and we're using ABC Door Company, once we award the bid, ABC Company says, "Oh, cool, we're gonna do these doors." So we got it, awarded us, then come find out, they take and they shop the bid around, and they go to XYZ, the work company, and it just causes some butters and some people.
I wasn't aware of any scenario that was like that, not in the contract, I can post something like that in there?
I'd say it probably happens a lot. I just had a phone call, and I'll just, was asking.
Yeah, there's currently nothing anywhere that says that they have to use the subcontractors that they bid with.
And I don't know if we can make them do that. I was just asking if we have anything in there about it, so. That's how it's all unfolded out of our hands, once we award it to them, they can, even if they use their bid to get their preliminary numbers, if they find a better deal, then that's what I would do. But that, basically, you're saying that subcontractors are not all lined out when they do the bid? They just have a number?
Yeah, they, they, we did not ask them to list their subcontractors, you know?
That's fine, I'm just asking.
But we, I mean, if you would like, just go back and have them add that-
No, I just wanted to know how we did it.
Usually, if it's work, I have them listed, but if they're just getting, you know, which I guess they'd be doing the install thing, but-
Yeah, I mean, they did say this literature on a brand, that they were using, but-
Yeah, there's different people that carry the different brands, usually. I don't know, we've had some, some door problems over there at the jail, too, so. It does kinda, I don't know. We'll keep an eye on what they're actually gonna use, make sure, 'cause those probably get open and closed a lot.
The only ones, we do daily in the shop area, the other ones, when we come to work in winter time, they're open in the morning, and they don't close till, most of the time, those doors don't close till we get down in the snow, then. So.
Okay.
I'll ask them that.
The shop doors are the ones that get open and shut a lot, especially in winter time. Is that the section seat back there?
Very good.
So Jeff's gonna ask about the windows, I'm gonna ask about everything else. So the walk-through doors, the downspouts, and the exterior paneling. Looks like we're bidding two different things. I mean, the prices are that far apart.
Similar or equal to? Someone asked them, they had to submit us a copy of what their actual portfolio was for bid, and then actually send us a piece of steel to give us an idea of what they were actually looking to put on. And this matches exactly what is on our building now.
Okay.
So I don't really see a problem with that part, really.
Okay. May this, I mean, the numbers are-
Yeah, they are.
Way, way apart, so. Looks like, looks like somebody missed something, or?
Well, it's, see, somebody did, did fault, or, is kinda like caterpillar and John Deere. Pay additional for the name.
Okay. I got a question. Oh? I move we award to GBH builders, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you just the contract?
Contract.
All right, Larry, is this National Public Works, is-
It's public work this week, too.
It is this week?
Yeah, it is, we're having a party from the staff.
Thank you.
And we got pizza today.
Pizza today, something, yeah.
Don't you become.
We'll get a resolution written up real quick, so we can show them our pizza.
Sports, they got off, he's better than Earth.
Larry, you're pretty good.
Did y'all send that contract to Jill?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have it, no.
Yes. Oh, no, I just print a pinch on the name, so I don't, that's the contract.
Oh, okay.
Tried to throw you off.
You have something to say?
I was gonna say, I double-checked three times before I left.
Yeah, that was the only thing, that's the only thing you-
So can we just scratch it out?
I'll just, if I could just print a new cover page.
Okay. I'm finished with this.
Just signing it.
We did.
I'm gonna find this contract. I move that we sign the contract with GBH Builders to refurbish the building in Cole County Public Works.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, thanks, Jenny. I'm getting in trouble for not being at breakfast Sunday. Why don't you yell at her? Her dad was there. Her dad, my dad's brother, you know?
Yeah.
I'm the only one getting in trouble. Here, I was praying for you.
I'm proud of you, so. I'm finished business, to be happy. I'm finished business. Okay, new business, accounts payable review.
There's no accounts payable out there this week, so.
I thought I was going through all of them.
They're still out there, but they're dating for next.
Oh, boy. My time this morning, I was trying to meet you just now, boys.
Sorry.
And then we scratched my staff, and down 17 really, that Rad Harbridge always gets our attention.
You put that on every agenda. Rad Harbridge.
You, you like that, and you ever put that in any of our copies?
There you go, Jeff, you need to start putting down the papers, so you can sell more papers. Rad Harbridge.
And vermin, don't forget the vermin, too.
Okay.
That's a good little sketch you drew, Luke. You just had it cleaned up.
Do we have anything else to cover for, yes?
So I just wanted to let you know that I had sent an email a while back about the governor signing a $3.5 million supplemental for the core public health contract, the A-10 public health line, that comes to us in the form of the core public health contract. Well, I guess they were waiting, he just signed it, so of course, it has to be dispersed to us in this fiscal year, which ends June 30th. So typically, our payment for the core public health contract is $10,223.67 a month. Well, in May, it's gonna be $43,000 and some change, so for May, we're getting an extra $33,000. So while most of that can go to supplement, you know, what we always do, because the core public health contract doesn't even cover, you know, everything it pays for with clinical disease investigations and our environmental staff, I would like to see how much it would cost to have our lobby painted, because I know that that is something that we talked about getting done, but there wasn't the money in the maintenance budget this year. So I was wondering if we could use those grant funds to pay for our lobbies, be paid in it, perhaps put on a bigger chair rail, because that's part of the problem, is the chairs with that anti-mupurreal leather, they push up against the edge, and then it's ripping the paint off the walls. And the other, I would also like to use a small portion of that to pay for the promotional materials, that we wanna do outreach at the graves this year for our 100th anniversary. So I was just wanting to know if it was okay, if you guys thought it was okay to have Jennifer slip some of this for the painting of the lobby? It would be nice to have a contractor do that, like, only get them while we're closed. What do you think?
So... I mean, I'm okay with painting the lobby, I don't know if we could, I think Greg's pretty swamped, but occasionally, he gets some people that have to do some community service or something, so I don't know. I'm not saying that they do the best job, but generally, I don't know, I think that area is, of course, on a weekend, they probably wouldn't have any supervision, so I'd say, I'd say we should do it.
I think, I think so.
I did find-
Basically, you have a chair rail, but it was built for a different chair altogether, I looked at that, and it's-
It's too low, I wondered if we could get, and it's glued to the wall, so if they try to rip it off, it's probably just gonna make it worse. I wonder if we can get another piece, might get it and just stack it, so that we do a crowd molding, just make it thicker?
That's kinda what I was-
Because it's, it's not-
If you spaced it apart enough, maybe you could put a little stripe or something, or something.
Yeah, it's just not, it's not the right height for the chairs we have.
That's fine, and just give us the number on what you want to spend on promotional materials.
Okay. And then, I did find those old vans they had for extending the health department, and they went out and brought it, so they took part of the parking, like, the expansion, there was only like an additional $3,000, so.
Chris, you said something about that the other day, I don't know if you've seen that, I have never seen that, the expansion of the health department.
In 2007, they had Architect Alliance, they planned for how they would expand the health department. And I found the place in my office, so. Pretty much, it's not raining.
That's fine.
They can be worth it, of course.
It's just curious, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause it's, we still trying to find the right, Dr. Cameron would still like for Drag and I to come look at this building, so courtesy, we probably will go, but it's-
Not big time?
No.
It's hard to decide, 'cause the plan, you know, we have, I don't know.
So it's about 3,000 square feet, or?
I remember talking about it, but it was after, y'all were very dense, or they did some drawing, it was before my time. I remember we talked about, there was plans. I don't remember clear with that, but those.
I'll bring them up. I speak a little bit, 'cause they don't add, I think the area would need to come up with additional rooms as quick, you know, 'cause they're bringing people back and forth, and they're seeing people in their offices, so. But anyway.
I like, you know, at Osage County, and they'll have 52, you know, people in a month, and I'm like, "Yeah, you're 1,700 a month."
I think that's one of the public health, it's coming up, too, that other group that's, that building that was built for the other community, the community health. They got that money.
They got that million dollars, I think, we, yeah, we had to talk to them, too, about how this is moving.
They just got the email. Oh, they just got the email.
They were, they were talking about either building, new building, or going something.
Alright.
They could be a good partner. Say move out of that building, that building. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Do we have any other issues?
No, we haven't had a quarterly meeting of department heads, but I'm just wondering if you guys wanna set a date for that, or we can talk about later, too. Can you put this out? Department sending some optional dates.
Why don't you do that? Are you looking at the chair?
Probably.